This should be plenty, yeah, it should be.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye. All right, here.
Moore?
I was gonna say, I was late.
Janer?
Here.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marion Bennett, please.
Oh, boy.
One of your last official duties?
Yeah.
We have a proclamation that reads on January 2020 marks 125 years of the Crittenon Center providing shelter, education, and empowerment to children, individuals, and families in Sueland. As whereas three individuals were instrumental in forming and organizing the Crittenon Center as we know it today. They were Charles Crittenon, Joanne Thurston, and Dr. Agnes Echolberger, should've read this beforehand. And whereas originally conceived as a home for unwed mothers, the Crittenon Center has evolved as the needs of the community have changed. Today, the Crittenon Center annually provides education and support to more than 2,000 parents, shelter, safety, and security to nearly 300 children, childcare and preschool education to more than 130 children, and empowerment and life skills training to nearly 50 individuals. And whereas the Crittenon Center has stayed true to helping women, children, and families at risk with the utmost respect, dignity, and professionalism, now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize the 125th anniversary of the Crittenon Center, and say thank you to the current and former staff, board members, donors, and clients who have been part of the Crittenon Center over the years. Like to present this to you and say a few words if you would.
Well, you kinda stole my speech, Mayor Scott. Well, thank you, Mayor Scott, and the City Council for this proclamation. I'm very proud of the work we do at Crittenon Center and serving the children and families of this community. And these are very needy children and families, and to be able to be here for 125 years, I feel is pretty phenomenon. And we're moving forward, we're gonna be here another 125 years. So again, I want to thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you, keep up the good work.
Thanks.
I have with me today some board members and staff.
Have them stand up.
Do we get a picture?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay.
Come on up here.
Come on up.
Back here, what do you wanna do?
You guys wanna come up here? Come on up here. Yeah.
Sure.
You wanna take this?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Up, Mary. I was gonna say, I'm not gonna...
Alright, thank you.
Not your toes, right?
Yes, indeed.
Got everybody?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Right, we're almost there. Yeah, alright, we're gonna go to Consent Agenda Items 3 through 16G, consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote asked for. If you wanna speak on one of those items, please come up as I read it, please, and state your name and address for the record. If you wanna speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns, again, state your name and address. I'll move the Consent Agenda. Second. Two is a reading of the City Council minutes of February 5th and 10th, 2020. Three is a motion approving a CLG annual report. Four is acknowledging, motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustments action, February 11th. Five are resolutions adopting plans and specs for the Heritage Parking Ramp Project. Six is a resolution assessing unpaid Skywalk charges against Sioux City Hotel, 707 Fourth Street.
I had a question about that. Phone editor, Dave. Just quick, I should've sent you a note, I apologize, but do you know, I feel like this has happened before within the last year and this property, have we ever made an attempt just to go down there and talk with them and see what the problem is of why they can't be timely with these payments, or?
I talk with them frequently.
Yeah. Perfect, and they just...
And as far as this owner, this is the first time with this owner.
Okay.
It was previous owners, so...
Yeah.
This owner affiliated with the previous owner, or no?
No.
When did he take over?
Maybe it's been a couple years?
Oh.
I don't remember exactly.
Because I see like a $10,000 on these already, and then now you're hitting it again. And how long do we let that go before we go to District Court?
Well, it goes to, it assesses it towards the property taxes. I've, we've never had to take it to District Court. So I don't know if there's a timeline for that or not.
The agreements provide for an assessment, that's the practice that we've done in the past, but we can't find one to collect.
So they'll, they, if they get behind on this, can they lose their property, like if I get behind on my property tax? No. Okay.
I just was curious, I appreciate the insight.
Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for one light duty bus. B is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for required expenses for support services. Eight are actions relating to grant agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract with Redlinger Brothers Plumbing and Heating for the Tyson Event Center Cooling Tower Project. B is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Echo Engineers for services at the water treatment plant. Nine are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution approving partial settlement of a workers' compensation claim. B is a resolution amending Resolution 2020-0132 approving a settlement payment. Ten are actions relating to property. A is a resolution proposing to sell a vacated West Street petitioner Mark Baker. B is a resolution authorizing a certificate of appropriateness for facade improvements at 215 Sixth Street petitioner Plan Architect. C is a resolution authorizing a release of a rental deed restriction agreement with Centennial Manor Partners for 441 West Third. D is a resolution authorizing a release of rental deed restriction agreement with Town View Partner for 400 to 464 West Fourth Street. Eleven are applications for property tax exemptions. Item 11A to anna resolutions accepting applications for property tax exemptions for improvements made to the property within the city's urban renewal areas. Twelve, purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Stu Hansen Dot City G for a Dodge Ram pickup. B is a resolution approving renewal option two for the DP Industries for the purchase of sodium hypochlorite solution beginning March 19. Thirteen, approved total payments and fund transfers for January 2020. Fourteen are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Fifteen are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list and come forward if you have any questions. Sixteen are receipt of minutes, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Call, we'll vote electronic.
Yes, you can use your voting panels.
Passes five zero. Seventeen is a hearing and ordinance rezoning 3100 Idaho Avenue petitioner Justin Donahue, PNC recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second. Jason Gary, Chair of Planning and Zoning, this one's a fairly simple one, they just need to be able to rezone the property so that they can subdivide it and to build some additional housing on site. Very simple, and it was unanimously approved.
Public hearings now open, would anyone like to be heard on this item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Is there anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it. Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I'll move second and third. Second. Passes five zero. Eighteen is a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of West 22nd Street. Petitioners Andy Anderson, PNC recommends approval, first consideration approved, June, January 27th deferred from February 3rd. I'll move the item.
Second.
Hearings now open, would anyone like to be heard?
Chris Hansen, Senior Planner, we did receive an updated notice from Heartland Baptist Church that did withdraw their opposition to the vaca...
They did what, I'm sorry?
They withdrew their opposition to the vacation.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing the time to have the parties discuss it further, too. Appreciate it.
Passes...
I'm a petitioner, I don't know if you want me to say anything or not, or?
It's gonna pass four to zero.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I abstain. Anybody wanna move to stat, the third reading? Yeah, I'll move that we waive the rules for second and third.
Second. Brecken?
Oh, it was?
Aye.
I'm sorry, for third.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Abstain.
Waters?
Aye.
I'll move third reading. Second. Passes four zero to one, I abstain. Number nineteen is a hearing and ordinance rezoning 4001 to 4003 Military Road petitioner Sal Fagan, PNC recommends approval deferred from January 27th, February 10th. Move it.
Second.
Everything's been worked out?
Mr. Mayor, Brent Nelson's Planning Division. I believe we have everything worked out regarding the street to the north, however, we do have some neighbors here that I believe would like to speak regarding the street. Staff recommends, as did the commission, recommended approval of the rezoning and the plat, but revised our recommendation to require lot four to have access on West 28th from the easterly 150 feet and joint access for lot three.
Was that part of what we were voting on, or do we need to add that to it?
I believe it'll be added in because it's coming from planning and zoning on the original recommendation.
Okay, the hearing's open. Anyone wanna be heard first, and then we'll get the recommend, we'll get the amendment first as soon as we... Tap on the screen, please.
You have to turn it on, Brent.
Name and address, please.
Jeremy Kleinschmidt, 4000 Bennington Road. I guess the road that you're looking at right there is Bennington, and that's where they were wanting to come with the entrances for lot three and four. It's 12-foot wide blacktop, as you can see in the one picture, I mean, that was just taken the other day. I mean, you can, two cars can get by, but you're going on the shoulder, it's not passable with two cars. The other picture is, is a normal snowfall year that, you know, the banks get, you know, piled up three, four feet with snow, and you're not moving over, it's one, one car lane. To have any entrances from lots three and four onto 30th Street, I think is a huge safety issue. One, the city doesn't maintain that road, I was told that they do periodically, but I've lived there seven, going on eight years. It's never been maintained, one, and I've called the city trying to get them to go out there when we had the 18 inches, and they said we, they don't maintain that road. I've maintained it the last probably two years, more than I have in the past. The neighbor down the road, he's maintained it for 20-some years, salted it, plowed it. Seven years I've maintained, cutting the trees down on each side with the other neighbors and stuff. I just, I don't unders, I don't agree with putting any more entrances onto that road. You know, we're plotting, we're making a development here, so why don't we make the development so everything enters off of Military Road? I'm all for building, that's what I do, but where it's feasible.
So Brent, show us what you're proposing, I guess, have you got that somewhere?
Jeff Hansen, Community Development Operations Manager. So as Brent mentioned, the proposed subdivision is shown on this general area map. The road in question lies on the north side. There's two lots that have frontage off of what's known as West 30th, or otherwise known as Bennington Road, which continues to the northwest. The original plat had provided an access point on both lots off of this West 30th, and it made it very difficult for any type of turnaround. And so as vehicles are coming down to this access point, and ultimately this secondary access point, they would have to back out potentially if there was another vehicle coming because of the narrowness of that paved street. So as a proposal, we met with the property owner and petitioner and the surveyor, and have come up with the solution that this lot would have to take access, which is the most flattest area of the subdivision, within 150 feet of West 30th, and then this lot here would have to have an access agreement. And so only one new access point would be created on this new five-lot subdivision. And none of the access point would go any further past 150 feet from Hale Street.
But with, with that being said...
Sir, we need you to stand in front of the microphone, please.
With that being said, so where it starts curving, where 30th goes, and then that little jog in in lot three, it kinda angles 45's up.
Yeah.
Halfway up that 45 is where it starts flattening out. From there, all the way down to 30th and Hale is, is a hill. So you're gonna put an entrance in, down on the flatter spot of that lot four. Great idea, but then, where's the water, you're gonna divert the water where? You're either gonna divert the water to Mike Ruble's house, or you're gonna divert the water, dam it up, or what, however, and it's gonna go into the guy at the bottom of Alaska and 30th. Right now, last year, when we got that rain in March, everybody's house on the lower level was flooded because all the water coming, all the melt coming down that hill, it was, it was bad. We were, they were cutting channels in just to get it to go to the ditch. I mean, it's not, it's not set up for anymore, I mean, in my mind.
Not set up for anymore?
Entrances, or, you know, you're gonna put another entrance in there, are you gonna put a culvert in there? So if you're gonna put a culvert in there, then you're gonna dig it down lower. Well, all the timber and all the stuff, when it melts, is gonna clog that up. And then where's it gonna go? Is it gonna go dam up there and go over the road into Ruble's property?
This, this doesn't mean anything to me, go back to that deal, I still don't...
I just wanted to show on here that the first lot that we mentioned with 150 feet of Hale Street would be this area.
And then what are you gonna do, cut a road?
And then as it, the, the bank is cut, you can see the topography here is where he's...
Right.
And we would not allow any access points from this point on.
Right.
Address those concerns.
I don't know how you're gonna stop people from driving over there, but it's not gonna work because if somebody will drive over their yard, but, especially in the summertime, but go back, I wanna, I don't understand this, not very smart, but why, why wouldn't you go? Why would we not, Military Road is set up for traffic, isn't that Military Road right there?
Yeah, the bottom.
Why wouldn't you just make them punch a street in?
Can, can I go over there and show you what, I mean, if it was me? And I...
I know why they don't wanna punch a street in, because it costs money, but I wanna get my own bearings. I, I know where Berry Street is, that's, I think I know where Berry Street is.
That's...
You're pointing to it, yeah.
Hale Street is, would, you know, the driveway is right there where the church is.
Okay, so that's Hale Street, that's what you'll drive up to get up here to this lot?
It's not passable.
No.
Right. So how do they get up there?
Take a man.
Berry. You know, Berry.
Yeah, Berry, yeah.
Right now, there's a house here that has a driveway and actually has an access easement to this lot up here, which has a residence as well. So these two lots already have an existing driveway off of Military. This access would come off Military as well as this. The two in question would be this lot and this lot.
So who owns all this property, one person?
Yes, Brad Wilson, the petitioner.
So he can actually...
Other than the interior lot.
Oh, he doesn't own the...
That's owned by Rasmussen, he does not own that.
I was gonna say, because if you could continue that road on...
Right.
You know what I mean, cut that, cut through the middle.
Well, is that a road, or is that a driveway?
It's a private driveway.
Driveway.
Yeah.
But that's probably wider than that street, okay.
It's, it's very similar to the same width.
And what is it that you, can you show us on there?
I'm saying, take, yeah. So the road comes up through here.
The driveway.
The, the, the private drive.
Yeah.
So then, right now, I mean, if you reconfigure some of the plots and, and have it from here access, I mean, that's minimal road that you'd have to put in to have access to lot four.
You wanna continue that private driveway around that curb?
But I think that's the mayor's point, or maybe it's not, but it's like, that's not ours. You know what I mean, we can't force anyone to do that, that's the problem.
To me, that makes more sense...
Or you can force it by not approving this plot.
Yeah.
Than to, to put more stuff onto 30th or Bennington, as you wanna say, because when I moved up there, it was blacktopped, Charlie Zook blacktopped it, I don't, I don't remember how many years ago. When I moved up there, I was told that that road was abandoned, that it's up to the, the people up there to maintain it. Okay, then, as digging into it, and I thought the whole blacktop road was all Bennington. The sign down at the bottom of so-called, I call it Bennington and 30th, that's where the street sign says Bennington. But now, in getting into this, I'm finding out Bennington starts where at 45. I mean, to me, I don't think that, I, I don't know, I don't, it's not main, it's, you know, not maintained by the city, but I was always told, and all the neighbors around there was always told that it was vacated or abandoned or whatever.
And Bennington's a normal width? I've never been, I've never been up there.
It's, it's the same width all the way through. And then you get to the end of that little triangular piece, and then it turns to a true minimum maintenance road going down. And that's what Dave Berger maintains and dumps gravel, you know, to maintain his access to his house down in the valley.
The property owner and the land surveyor and the audience as well, they can answer questions in regards to the access points, and it may look easier on paper to provide access up through that existing driveway, but the topography out here is pretty extreme, so.
In addition, council members, one of the concerns we developed when reviewing this is, well, we have two proposed lots up here, there was no requirements that we found prohibiting new development. We also have Mr. Kleinschmidt's, the old Zook property, which is now owned by Chalkan, Dave Berger, and property owned by Shulun Berger, that all, that has significant development possibilities, but that all comes off of Bennington, Bennington Road, which is a street that has, has no set mechanism for maintenance. We passed a resolution back in 82 saying we'll, it shall remain open but not maintained. That's a concern, if we have an unmaintained road and we're still on development on it. We, we need to work some of those things out, which is one of the reasons we recommended the two, two access points until we get maintenance issues worked out.
Anyone else be heard?
Because while he's walking up, because where are the two access points? I know the one up in the top right corner is within 150 feet.
They originally proposed two, one at this location and one at, at this location, and...
But where staff is saying is saying...
Developer and have agreed with staff that if we provide only one access here and then adding an access easement across the two lots to provide access to this buildable site here, so we're only adding one new curpin or access point.
Yeah.
Was that almost gonna be like a little frontage roof?
It would be very similar to what we have down here on Military Road already, it'd be a private drive.
They would have to build that.
That they would have to build.
Situation.
It would have to be built by the...
Property owner.
Lot owner or the prop, the property owner. It's not quite as steep as the existing drive is, that existing drive has got to be 12%. This is steep, but not that steep.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Great. I'm Jim Bilson, 2924 Alaska Street. You're seeing it here on a flat piece of paper, but if you're out there in person, there's a heck of an elevation change. There's high banks that keep the snow from melting the entire winter. If you stop partway up that street, you can't continue on ice, you're stuck. But two cars can't meet on that, you're talking about using at least the first 150 foot or whatever, but anyhow, I don't think if you did that, there's room to get cement trucks and those kind of things in there to build it. That, it's so tight, 12-foot wide street, and it's pretty tight. In fact, several of the intersections leading to it are 30 feet from where they originally plotted out to be. There's a zig, a jog in the road about three places out there where, you know, trucks have a hard time. But anyhow, by the way, just for reference here, Charlie Zook told me 33 years ago when I moved there that that street was vacated a long time ago. I don't think he would've blacktopped it if it was still a city street. And Virgil Clemens, who'd spent there 50 years, said he's lived right there in that house there, showing there, and he says, there's never been a piece of maintenance equipment up there as long as he knows. If you did take a snowplow or a road grader up there, you couldn't turn it around, you'd have to back half mile out. And, so I talked about street lighting, let me look here. Oh, on the gravels that lead to that, the two roads that will get you there are gravel, very poorly maintained. In fact, I've done more maintenance on them than city has in 33 years. But anyhow, in the spring, it gets terrible muddy. Usually, the water runs across the road, making you have to detour or plow through the water. It, in the spring melt, it generally runs over the road there, which is not too ideal. Another thought about it, too, the less hills, been there 16,000 years, there's plants that grow there, that only grow there, and the more you keep planting things there, the less you're gonna have of those hills that someday you're gonna run out of plants because there's houses everywhere. But, let's see. I guess that covers it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mike Ruble, I live at Hale Street, right there on the corner is my house. It is a dangerous street for as many vehicles go up and down that thing. People gotta back down it in the middle of the night, and ju, just so another car can get up it. I've had animals killed on that road with the traffic that's on it currently, so. I see two more lots up there, that's just more traffic I'm gonna have to deal with there. If they do put an entrance in down there, I see the water running to my place, so I don't know how they can fix that. In my concerns.
Thank you. Did you give your address? Did you get it?
I did get the house number. Sir?
You could give your address, I'm sorry.
3001 Hale Street in Jale.
Can I have one more take for this?
Yeah.
The house that would be basically kitty corner from that house...
You gotta go, you gotta, you gotta go here, okay, it's just...
The house that would be kitty corner from that house is now showing me to be on the left there, he has quite a water problem, that hill is like a great big funnel, and all the water on that area goes right to where that corner zigzag's there, and it quite often floods his basement, there's not a good drainage there, and, uh, it's quite a problem to see the poor guy get his basement flooded periodically, that, uh, and if you add, uh, a road there, you'd have to take some special considerations with a, a berm or a dam or something to ensure that the water gets out of the area.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else?
Jeff, could you tell me again, about the hundred and fifty feet, so i- is the only way you're saying would be out would be on Twenty-Nine Street, over to Berry?
I'm proposing with the petitioner and the surveyor that we would only allow an access point to one hundred and fifty feet to the west of this property corner, which happens to... fall in line before you start getting into this cut bank, and it falls in line before you start going up to this hill, so we're saying that the only access point they can have is as close to the intersection as possible, there's still needs requirements for the separation from the intersection, and then the lot to the west would have to come off that same access point and have to be recorded on the plat that their access...
And they'd have to put some drive up that hill or something, or whatever they would do, whoever would ultimately have that lot.
How does that prevent the use of the road going up then? I'm just, I'm not tracking with you, I'm sorry.
Traffic generated from the two lots down here at the intersection versus going further west onto this road, they would have no reason to continue on because their access point doesn't come off...
It's down at the bottom of the hill.
Grade wouldn't allow them to, to gain access.
Does that make sense, that at least then, the traffic is not gonna be backing down that hill, it's gonna be on their private drive? I forget which one of you pointed that out, just the increased traffic, you know?
I agree with that, but, um, with that, the water goes, you know, because all the stuff coming down from that bank, when, when it melts or rains, everything...
I'm, I'm gonna need you to come up to my phone, I'm sorry, but we'll have people complaining that we don't.
So I, I mow from Mike's house all the way to the end of the blacktop, both sides, every, all summer long, okay, so heavy rains, downpours, all, all the, the twigs and leaves and everything all go down to that point, so the only way, if you put a culvert underneath that road, it's gonna dam up, it's gonna, it's, and where's that water gonna go after it dams up?
Then you're saying it's gonna go over the roadway and into his property?
Right, 'cause if you look at the road right now and you take some elevations, the road slopes to Rubel's house. Not much, but it does, but when you dam it up, it's gonna run over there, there's nowhere else for that water to go.
Isn't there a process, though, Brent and Jeff, to, to, uh, make sure that doesn't happen or that it's designed?
Civil, yeah.
Civil matter unless you take care of it now.
That's what I'm asking, though, isn't there a subdivision?
I would say that water drainage is a separate issue, access point, I mean, the property owner, the engineer, surveyor are gonna have to determine where exactly that access point should be and how big the culvert, culverts all over town in these type of areas, they would have to size it appropriate, appropriately and also have maintenance done on that culvert, um, I don't know if we can restrict the approval of a plat based on future maintenance for water.
No, but if I were putting a commercial property here, you'd sure tell me to put a holding pond before you let me put it in that ditch.
Based on the square footage of the impervious area, the commercial would have to single...
Yeah, but this is a big lot with a lot of runoff, and I don't know why you wouldn't require something there to make sure that there's a berm or something to slow that water down.
And also...
Because we're just setting up, but we're gonna set up here and we're gonna have a lawsuit, and the city's gonna get blamed because it's gonna cause problems, develop...
As their household...
I mean, it's, it's a price development, I understand that, but we oughta head that problem off right now, because otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna run like we always do and say, you know, sorry, but that's a civil matter, we're not gonna involve ourselves in that, attorneys are great at that, even though we help create a problem, we run from that, I don't think we should do it on these type of projects, this is, I'm, I'm not for this at all, I gotta tell you, I, I, I think the road belongs up off Military and they put a road, what, they put a roadway up, all the way up there to service that lot back behind, what, what's wrong with extending that up there, I don't get it, it seems to me you got less road when you, if you, if you veer, veer off, you got less road than what you're gonna put in running a hundred and fifty feet here and then running it all the way across to the next lot.
Possibly the property owner or surveyor can answer that question.
Check that out.
But you are saying the topography makes that.
Afternoon.
The topography on this whole thing?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Alan Fagan, I'm the land surveyor, the, the parcel, the two point nine one parcel in the middle of this site is owned by another party, Brad Wilson does not own that, so we can't continue in a road across that for access, contour from Military Road north would not allow this to put a, put a driveway to get to those back lots, um, the location at a hundred and fifty foot west of Thirtyeth and Hale, I had my four-wheeler out here when I was working on that, there's already an entrance there, the, we're not changing anything with the, with the flow of the water, the only thing that we're, with the change in this plat, we're not creating a new entrance up there at that angle for where, as it was mentioned, turns and goes a forty-five degree angle northwesterly.
You, you can't guarantee it won't change the course of water without knowing where the house is gonna be built and all that stuff, because those things change the course of water, so you can't stand there today and say emphatically that the water's not gonna change, can't do that, 'cause you don't know, you don't know that guy, if he's gonna come in there and take a bunch of dirt off there, do ya?
Well, there's no grading to be done on the site and the, and the lot would permit...
But if I buy it, I can grade it any way I want to, right? It's a, it's a lot, I don't have to get a building, or get a grading permit for a lot, residential, so you can't guarantee me that.
All, all the lots, they could do that, though, too, and change the, the direction of the water.
That's my point.
So I think the mayor's just trying to say we're trying to do our due diligence now to protect the property owners that already have property down at the bottom.
I, I understand, and, and those pictures that you looked at, that's from the east looking west, you can see that there's drainage ditches in there, I mean, there's not a tube in that entrance, what I'm saying is an entrance now, and it should be able to accommodate a tube that, that will get rid of the water, but, but as far as the water coming down Thirtyeth Street, we're not changing anything, that, it's the way it is now.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if it would get that clogged, you know what I mean, like seeing the size of the ditch there now, if it would get so clogged that no water would go through.
That ditch is only that deep right there from the blacktop, uh, there is no ditch, it's just a side, I mean, there's no...
It's just a swell on both sides.
Very little, if any.
Yeah, there's, there's not much, I would assume that water probably comes down the asphalt, too, you know, when, when you get a lot of, when you get a lot of rain, but like I said, though, there's, there's already the start of an entrance there at this location that we're try, that we're proposing.
Hey, Alan, do you think, though, that some kind of a ponding would, would help?
I don't think we could do that without doing some substantial dirt work, I mean, it's, it's a big bank.
Yeah, I know, and that, yeah, and I wouldn't want you to do that if it's not necessary, but I'm just trying to think of some solution that would take care of going forward, so if something does happen on the lot, mayor, or it's constructed in such a way that the neighboring properties are affected.
Yeah, and, and to, to create a pond over on, on Lot Four, then you'd, you know, they have to get across that with their driveway, too, so I don't see how ponding being a solution in this particular site.
But you would, you are mindful, though, of the drainage, of course, as a...
Yes.
I mean, I know that about you, you'd be mindful of it and would design for that.
Yes, but what we're doing here with that entrance there, to me, we're talking about the flow of the water down Thirtyeth Street, and we're not changing that.
You are if you're putting the drive, or, oh, you're talking on the street, I'm talking in the ditch, yeah?
Yeah, no, I, I'm just talking about the drainage on Thirtyeth Street, I'm not talking about the, the rest of the lot, I'm just talking this location right here. We're not changing anything.
Hey, Brent. Part of the, in the first paragraph under recommendation talks about, uh, right, staff recommends following conditions, and number three is directing staff to develop a proper maintenance plan for streets in the area, what are we talking about there exactly? What, what were your maintenance?
Mentioned that, uh, a moment ago, uh, the greatest concern I would have is from that point where the road jogs, uh, about forty-five hundred feet to where Bennington Road ends, we have four residences now, and development, four residences to proposed lots, and development pressure, and absolutely no mechanism for maintaining a road, that, leaving that as is, 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 in my opinion, bad planning, we need to, and I don't have the answers right now, but we need, you need to tell us to get that done in, in a reasonable time, um, I mean, in nineteen eighty-two, the council, at the time, approved a resolution stating that there will be no maintenance on that road, but they never directed anybody to prohibit development, those two issues don't work, so we need to come up with a plan, uh, regarding maintenance, and to a certain extent, ditches and that type of thing involves maintenance, too.
But, well...
Not just, not just snow plowing, uh, not just, uh, hatching, hatching potholes.
And that's, I guess that's my point, if, if we pass this, then, in effect, are we not giving them direction to develop the maintenance plan and come up with something that will or will not solve, hopefully will solve, some of the problems we're talking about?
And for clarification, the item that's been moved in the hearing that, before the council on the floor, is just on the rezoning, I know that we're talking about the final plating issues as well, um, but for clarification, the record, we're kind of overlapping a few issues here, and I understand that they're intertwined, but clarify.
The other comment I would make is, we're dealing with a standard gravel road that was ultimately paved with substandard thickness from a private property owner further down to the west, so as Brent mentioned, directing staff to work on a maintenance program, as part of that is what happens when this substandard, blacktop, hard-surfacing road becomes a point where it has to be repaired or replaced, more than likely, our response to that, it's gonna return back to a gravel road, and those property owners need to be made aware of that, because this is not a paving job that was completed by the city, it was done by a private property owner, whether there was permission or not, we don't know, um, but obviously, I'm sure it's not up to city standards, both on the thickness and obviously on the width, it's approximately twelve feet wide.
But it's clear that it has not been vacated.
From our records, it has not been vacated.
Just one, so if Al Fagan was talking, not putting a driveway onto Lot Four is not gonna change any, any grading or any, uh, drainage of that ditch, but right now, that blacktop sits about three inches taller, higher than the, the sides, so are you gonna go down and then back up so you're following the contour of the side of the ditch, you're not gonna do that, you're gonna have a zero entrance into that lane, so in reality, you will change the side of the, the, the drainage, two, you know, that, that was put in by Charlie Zook, um, everyone thought it was a vacate and everything, I'm proposing, if, if we're having a hard time deciding how we're gonna maintain it, vacate it, I'd buy it, and I'll maintain it with the neighbors, like we have been doing for the last twenty, thirty years, then you guys don't have to worry anything about it.
Well, wouldn't you have to, wouldn't you wanna be concerned, though, about the drainage, is that where some of the drainage is coming?
Right, right now, the drainage is draining, it's, last year, I mean, all around town it was flooding last year, during March, when we got that, that snow, I'm saying, if we're allowing more entrances going onto that road and changing the flow of that road is when we're gonna have issues for Rubel, the other guy, um, that's, uh, on that steeper ditch side.
But if we direct the two lots to come out that, at that one corner...
Off of Military Road?
That would, no, I know that's what you want, but, but the two lots coming off the one corner, as we talked about, that would help.
But that, that's where all the water's coming down at?
Coming down that blacktop road?
Yeah, so that's where all, the bulk of the water goes, and then, right, right when it gets off the blacktop, it goes into that side ditch, I'm saying, if you put a culvert or any kinda ditch there and it, with all the, the debris and everything that comes off of that road during a downpour or whatever, it's gonna plug it if it's a, if it's a culvert or a...
Have they stated what size culvert's going in there?
Well, well, nothing's been stated as far as what's the means and methods of the access, I mean...
That's what just shocks me, is that you really think it will be that clogged, that it would really clog that?
Full of tree branches.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to make it at about a thirty-six or more...
Have to be big.
Tree branch can get through there, unfortunately, and you, and you're almost gonna have to extend it to that other ditch is the problem, because if you don't, it's not gonna work, you're gonna have to dig it deeper and...
If you, if you went up there and actually laid eyes on it, I agree with you, that biggest culvert would probably, would work, but with the lay of that area, I mean, it don't work with a lot of...
Water's really powerful.
In regards to the vacation, staff would have concern, uh, I believe your home is right here on the corner?
Uh, yes, I, I, I have that lot and I have the triangle on there.
In this lot, so if there was a request to vacate and, uh, you would purchase this portion of it, we now have cut off future access for all of...
Up there.
Lots up here as well.
So if there ever would be development in the future, it's not like we could go back?
That would be including the two houses that are already there.
I've talked to the other homeowners, landowners, um, I mean, I, I could get them here, and that they're, they're in the same agreement, if, if that road's available to be vacated and we could purchase it, we would form a whatever up there and everybody pays so much to, for the snow removal and...
Oh, form an association?
Yeah, and that would be ours to maintain.
Got something else for the cause?
One more thought for the practicality of this, that there's several blocks of gravel, no matter which way you come in there, and forever after, to those nice new houses, they're gonna drive through either mud or dirt to get there, it'd be more practical to come off of Military, they got a good road, they could keep it that way, I got people that won't come to my house 'cause they'll get their car dirty, so think about it.
Hey, Alan, I have a question for you. What do you think about the point that was made where the driveway would come in level onto the road instead of coming down and up to keep that drainage system open?
Well, ultimately, best case scenario, that's what you wanna do, but, I mean, it's very drivable the way it is right now, like I said, when I was working at this site, that's how I drove in and out, so...
Was that it's basically level with the roadway right now?
No, it, 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 it goes down slightly, but not a lot.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's very, very gentle slope.
I don't know if, I don't know if you can keep it that way or not.
Mm-hmm.
-in the, in the plan.
Well, first of all, the city's engineering department, uh, will have to review the culvert or culverts. Instead of one big one, we've had several times where it's been five, four or five liter. That has to be signed off, uh, any access point like that, uh, the design has to be signed off by engineering. And of, of course, it hasn't been designed yet, because we're still at this point. But, um, they won't approve it if it is not adequate.
Is that automatic, or do we need to make it subject to that type of approval by the city engineer?
Res zoning first, you have to do that in the next.
When a building per-
Yeah, I understand.
It should be part of the building permit.
When a building permit's requested, the access points would be reviewed at that time.
So there's some protection there?
I believe so.
Well, can we be sure? I mean, how-
That's your engineering department, they've never failed you.
No. Mayor?
Well, why don't we require that they present that at the same time we decide on the zoning, that we know?
That can't be tied together.
Can't be? Okay.
Just under the next item with the plan. You wouldn't have, I don't think you'd have a problem with that, it would, it'd be part of the permitting process.
No, because the, the developer, he wants a nice, safe driveway too.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're saying tied to, or I guess, we can vote on this, and then we'll see what the next one, or what we amend and what we say.
I would caution, and I would have to leave this up to the petitioner, but, um, if you take a vote on the rezoning, possibly make a contingent on the plat, because I would need to, um, request permission from the applicant. In this case, he may not want the rezoning approved, if you don't approve the plat.
Yeah.
If you follow what, because currently it's zone ag, and it has, uh, the availability for ag land uses. If you rezone it and don't approve the plat, the petitioner may not agree with that action.
We need to amend the item that's been moved and seconded to do that?
I do not believe that the conditions that staff is asking for apply to the rezoning. I believe they're asking that those are conditions of the final plat approval.
The last part that you just said would be on the second part as well, it wouldn't be on this?
Well-
Well, the conditions as it relates to the access points and the maintenance agreement is on the plat. What I'm saying is-
Correct.
We may not want to approve a rezoning.
The rezoning is subject to the plat.
I don't, I'm not going to go for, any, any one councilman would ask not to go second, third, I'm going to ask that not go today.
I was going to, that's what I was going to suggest.
Four, three times, more neighbors are going to want to speak, and they ought to have a right to if they want to.
And it'll have time to iron out, hopefully, and workable.
I'll move we close the hearing, or I mean, uh, hearing's now closed.
We're voting on rezoning.
Correct.
Item nineteen.
Correct.
I believe staff still has questions.
So if, if I'm understanding, your request is to approve the first and only reading of the rezoning.
Yeah.
The plat only requires one reading, it's not an ordinance.
Okay.
So therefore, you would not be able to take any action on the plat until all three rezoning-
Exactly.
Correct. Be a deferral on the next item.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Follow that, Alan?
Yes.
I was going to say, and just so the neighbors know too, then, we'll be back here next week to talk about it as well. So if any other property owners want to come back next week, they can come and voice their concerns. I'm sure the developer and surveyor, they'll go back and look and see what we can agree to as well. But it'll come back next week for the second reading, and then if it goes another week, then it'll be one more for the final reading, if that makes sense.
Um, Councilman Waters, um, we've been working closely with the neighbors, uh, I've been out there with them. We'll keep working and letting, letting them know what's-
Yep, 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 I totally, I, I trust you well.
Buddy, do you have the votes?
Thank you.
Well, he's, yes, thank you.
I could see it.
Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, passes four, four to one, I vote no, I'm, I'm all for development, I just don't know that these two lots at this time with that road, I just have a lot of hesitation about it. I'll move to defer item twenty till next week.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Hearings twenty-one, or hearings and resolution approving plans and specifications for fire station number seven and wastewater treatment plant lower, building roof re, roof replacement, I'll move that. Second. Public hearing is now open, anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
I guess, right.
Passes five zero twenty-two is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Expo Center Video and Scoreboard Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open, anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero twenty-three is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the Leeds Connector Trail Project. I'll move that. Second. Anyone to be heard? Public hearing's open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero twenty-four is a hearing and resolution approving fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one maximum property tax dollars. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Twenty-five is a hearing and ordinance designating six twenty-five Douglas Street is local land, uh, local landmark, Fisher Lam Arts. I'll move that. Second. Anyone want to be heard, the hearing is now open. I have a couple of comments to make, if I may, Mayor. You can do whatever you want to, Mr. Moore. Okay, well, six twenty-five Douglas Street, and I would ask Mrs. Woolley, because Mr. Woolley took seriously or literally break a leg-
Yeah.
-as they do in show business, so you stay put, you don't need to come up to the podium, but I'd ask you both to come up to the podium. Six twenty-five Douglas is really, really an exciting project. It, it is very rich in historic significance to Sioux City, Iowa, and it's a, a great boost for the performing arts in Sioux City. Mr. and Mrs. Woolley are, uh, this is their hometown, and they chose to stay in Sioux City for all of these years. My kids, your kids, you've done a great deal, meaningful contributions to the performing arts. And I just want to share with everyone what I gleaned from your write-up and asking for the historic preservation designation. Six twenty-five Douglas, I, some of this I didn't know until I read it, and it was, it's, it's really interesting. Six twenty-five Douglas Street is the original Sioux City Municipal Auditorium, built in nineteen oh nine, before City Hall and before the Woodbury County Courthouse. That's one fact I didn't know. And, um, they use the auditorium for performances and events from nineteen oh nine until nineteen forty-six. Lam Arts Regional Theater and Lam School will be, that'll be home to those two entities. Something else that jumped out, of course, the state historic tax credits will be very instrumental in the development of this, uh, six twenty-five Douglas aid restoration, um, to the building back to its original use as a performing arts space. The other thing I really liked that jumped off the page was, it will enhance the marketing of Sioux City as a tourist destination by taking advantage of unique oppor- opportunities. And it will definitely enhance the appearance of downtown, no question about that, thank you, thank you, thank you. Together, um, events that were, uh, hosted there during that nineteen oh nine to nineteen forty-six period ranged from circuses to presidential visits to vaudeville and Broadway shows. The City Hall took up residence in the block in nineteen thirteen, and the Woodbury County Courthouse was constructed in nineteen eighteen. And I might add, with regard to City Hall, we have what we have here today with its outside exterior due to a lot of effort and thanks to Mayor Bob Scott for that work. I sat from a distance and watched that happen, and it was just terrific that we were able, isn't it? It really is, it really is, with City Hall and the courthouse, I'm, as you can tell, I'm really excited about this project. The other thing that really jumped off the page, that's really, really cool, is it was truly the heart and soul of our city, that auditorium, it was the heart and soul, and you're bringing that back to be the heart and soul of our city. Who's who of famous people, you might have to help me on some of these names, but you had one of my favorites here back then. Uh, William Howard Taft, of course, liked, liked him, Woodrow Wilson, I didn't know him, but I liked him. Woodrow, Woodrow Wilson, Sarah Bernhardt, Ethel Berrymore, Jack Dempsey, Al Jolson-
Yeah.
Was here in Sioux City.
Yeah.
That's just, I love it, I love it, John Philip Sousa, and the one I need help with a little bit is Valid, Valimer? Valimer Horowitz?
Oh, Vladimir.
Vladimir Horowitz, thank you.
And Anna Pavova, the dancer from the twenties.
Yes, yeah, fantastic entertainers and politicians, some might say that's one and the same, but we'll leave that alone, Mayor, don't touch it. The other thing that jumped off the page, it will breathe life into downtown Sioux City. Six twenty-five Douglas, everybody make a note of six twenty-five Douglas, it's a fantastic project. I'm really proud of all the work you've done, I'm proud of you undertaking a big project. I mean, this is a serious project, and it's all been positive, thank you for being positive about this.
What was that address again?
Six twenty, six twenty-five Douglas Street, and I bet you they'll have ice cream.
Oh, I hope so.
Um, the building will house three spaces for performances and gatherings reminiscent, reminiscent of the building's original use as an auditorium. These are the things that jumped out of the report that you all put together, that we got the recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm really excited about this, and I want to thank you both personally for being in Sioux City for as long as you have, raised your family, and you have touched hundreds, hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of young performing artists. And I had a little bit of that Saturday evening at your Inside Out event, out at, uh, the celebration, country celebrations. That was really marvelous, and-
Thank you.
You know what, as they say, and you know the show business, Mayor, I do, but the best is yet to come. So, I just thought maybe you could make some remarks like you made Saturday night, you might forget what you said.
Yeah, but keep it short, no, no.
I just wanted to say Diana had great leaders, a couple of grades of head up her in school.
That's it.
Get things done.
That's it.
Bet she's only two years behind me.
Is it true that the mayor was in the school library as much as he told me he was?
Yeah, constantly.
That's where they sent the bad boy to, to Sarge, remember?
Six twenty-five Douglas, talk about-
Well, we want to thank you very, very much, um, after this is voted on, and I'm making an assumption that it will be in the positive, this is, is one of the elements, our architects have been working months, um, the past months with the state for historic tax credits. Uh, you know the deal, you guys do this all the time, our learning curve has been very, very steep. But this is one of the designations that was needed, um, because, uh, it's a possibility of, uh, historic tax credits being awarded of, of three point three million dollars. That's a, a nice little piece, we need a lot more than that, so we're not stopping. We, we, there's a lot more to be done, a lot more work, but that's a, that's a, a good little building block. So that's what this is all about, and it, and it was not any great leap, as we worked on this, to get that designation of historical significance, the building is incredible. And, and, and yes, it's going to be, it's going to be incredible again, so again, I'm thankful.
And you started off great, because you had the pictures from way back then.
Yeah.
But I, I'm telling you, I'm just really, I'm really, um, excited about it, I, but that building was there-
What is that address again?
Six twenty-five Douglas, but that building was there before City Hall and the county courthouse. I mean, can you just picture what that was like?
No, no, I can't, I'm-
You just have to picture it from the books.
I don't have a clue.
But really, rich historic significance, rich, 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 thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Very much.
Calm down now, I'm just headwashed.
Cold towel.
Six twenty-five Douglas, Alex.
I'll tell you what, I'm going to need directions.
It's going to be our new hangout.
Need directions.
Thank you, Mayor, I know I went over-
Let's hurry up and vote for the credits expire, okay?
I was just bummed I missed it on Saturday.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. Passes five zero twenty-six, or-
Go get them.
Hearing and ordinance awarding, amending the building code-
Thank you.
To adopt the Iowa code regarding abandon, what did I miss?
That's an ordinance, Mayor, the last on the, 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 the.
Ready, three reads, huh?
Yeah.
Well, then we better do that, anybody opposed to waiving the second?
No.
Read, second and third on six twenty-five Douglas.
No, no.
Dan, did you want to say a few words?
I'll second six twenty-five Douglas.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye, I'll move second, third. Second, on six twenty-five Douglas.
I'd like to say a few words on it.
Did you want to say something?
No, you're, you took it all, man, you're good to go.
TV feed is horrible, so you know, Lisa.
Excuse me?
TV feed is horrible, according to people out in TV land.
I don't know if there's anything we-
Sorry.
I don't know if there's something we can do on our end.
Just want you to know.
Okay, I'll check into it.
Twenty-six is a hearing and ordinance amending the building code to adopt Iowa building. Iowa code regarding abandoned, unsafe buildings abatement by rehabilitation, I'll move it. Second. I think I'm going to make my eight o'clock appointment. Doubting it for a minute. I had a six twenty-five appointment, I'm going to miss that, so. Passes five zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No.
I'll move that. Second.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Move second and third. Second. Passes five zero twenty-seven is a discussion regarding a resolution, amending resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero five three by authorizing a ninety day delay in demolition of the property at ten, twelve, nineteenth street. The contract buyer, Norma Garcia Rodriguez. What's happened on this one that we would want to give a delay?
Daryl, law code enforcement manager, um, this is one of the properties that was at the placard hearing and was given ninety days to, uh, get their everything together and come and talk to me about it, they've done that, they presented all the documentation to me, so basically, this gives them their ninety day stay of demolition, and they're well along the way to the project, they'll get it done in short amount of-
And this was just one of the residential's, right?
Yes, it was, yeah.
The one where the dad was out of town for a while?
No, this is one that, um, basically, the property got vacated, if you will, just kind of abandoned. Um, had a washout underneath the front porch from a water main that had broke.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He just bought this under contract.
It was small, yeah, yeah.
Very small home.
He wanted to flip it and-
Yeah.
Very small home, he's going to probably use it as a rental, I would imagine.
Who, who's doing it?
Kent Meyer.
No, that's what I thought, yeah, I'll move that. Second. Thanks, Daryl.
Absolutely.
Daryl, can I ask you a question separate from this?
Sure.
Real quick, while I'm thinking of it, because you're the gentleman's got the knowledge, that Tobacco Hut at twenty-seventh and Chambers?
Yes.
There was car accident, I know it's placard.
Yes.
There's a hole inside the building, there's debris all on the outside, onto the sidewalk.
The insurance-
Been a month or more?
Yeah, the insurance company's done, completed their investigation, and we're playing phone tag today. It looks like that they're going to move forward with demolition of the structure.
Oh, okay.
Based on the damage that was done, there's a lot of severe structural cracking that had taken place throughout the entire, the shock took through, so. It looks like they're going to move forward with demolition on their own.
I just thought if it was going to be for a longer period of time, it'd be nice if somebody cleaned up that area.
We would, and then make sure it's secure so people can't get nearer, and it would fall.
Yeah, exactly.
Can I ask you a question before you go to? Of our placard hearing, is this the one and only that's coming to see you?
The gentleman's come forward with, with complete set of documentation for that. The gas station at twenty-seventh and Court Street has completed soil testing, and they're making their decision now if they want to move forward with the actual repairs of the structure, or demolition and restart, or what they're going to do. They're in that planning stage, but I have had communication with them. Um, I've reached out to, um, property across the street.
Yeah.
Haven't heard anything back on that yet, but I have-
Really?
Have heard from a prospective buyer that they were interested in making contact to try to make a purchase of that building, so we'll always keep looking at that, come up with.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hold my breath.
The gentleman's got $125,000 in his hand to work on that.
Yep.
Hey, Julie, you'll figure it out.
I already figured it out. That's why I asked him how money he had.
Passes 5-0, comprehensive plan update. Hi, Jeff.
Good afternoon.
Place isn't packed with all the people wanting to hear this.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. Over the last two years, we've been developing a new comprehensive plan for Sioux City. The last plan was adopted in 2005, and typically, they're renewed and updated every 10 years. Based on our funding cycle, obviously, we went over the 10-year window for the renewal process on that. Over the last two years, we've had numerous public workshops, steering committee meetings, Planning and Zoning Commission presentations, key stakeholder interviews that occurred with both citizens and business owners in Sioux City. We've partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to spread the word and receive public input, both at the workshops as well as online, through online survey. If you recall, when we did the survey approximately 18 months ago, we had very light turnout, and we turned to a lot of social media, Chamber business owners, working with Ann Westra, and we significantly jumped that number up into the thousands for responses to gain public input on the comprehensive plan. So we're nearing completion. This week, we have Nick Davis, who's in the audience, to provide a presentation on an update for the latest draft. This week, we have numerous other meetings. Tomorrow, we have an internal staff meeting to review the document. We have a steering committee meeting, which is made up of business owners and citizens within Sioux City. That was formed when the project was started, so we have a noon meeting tomorrow. And then to end the day tomorrow, we have a Planning and Zoning Commission presentation, which will be this presentation, and a much more in-depth with the plan, approximately 45 minutes to an hour presentation, which we did do a press release, if you saw last week, to invite the public to attend the Planning and Zoning Commission. So they're all waiting to come tomorrow, Mayor, to that presentation. As well as, we've been asked by the media to livestream the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so we've worked with Lisa and her staff, and that will be livestreamed tomorrow at 4 o'clock in the council chambers. We do have a couple of planning and zoning items before that, but we anticipate those to be wrapped up by about 4:15, 4:20, and we'll get right into the presentation. So I'd like to introduce Nick Davis to the council, and he's gonna provide a brief overview of where we're at with the plan and where we've been, so, thank you.
You. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you. Well, yeah, Jeff did a really good job kind of teeing up some of the things I was gonna talk about, so I guess what I'll do first is, first of all, thank you for giving us an opportunity to present the draft comprehensive plan. I'm gonna go through, not the entire document, it is quite a long document, so I'm gonna go through some of the highlights, and then any questions that you may have, definitely feel free to, maybe let me get through these slides, and then we'll just come back to it. So, let's see if this will work. So the first part I want to talk about, and this is just how the plan itself is structured, so it's broken out, there's an introduction and planning context. Within that introduction, we just, we talk about what the purpose of the comprehensive plan is, why we do comprehensive planning, what the planning process has been throughout, and then just kind of a high level, there's a project initiation, we did community outreach, much of which Jeff has already talked about or sort of outlined. One of the things that I want to make sure we highlight is, there were workshops, there were online participation opportunities, we had online mapping questionnaires, we did visioning workshops, we worked with the steering committee to get a sense of, you know, what the community was looking for, using them as really a sounding board, all throughout the process, even, that's one of the groups that we're gonna be meeting with tomorrow, just to get their feedback, make sure it's resonating, make sure it sounds like what the plan should be addressing. We did a market and demographics analysis, an existing conditions analysis, we drafted a vision statement, then goals and objectives that helped achieve those vision, or that vision statement. We did subarea planning, community-wide plans and policies, which is really what the bulk of this document is, and then an implementation strategy that helps you realize what many of these policies, what these recommendations are trying to outline. And then, we're sort of in this plan documents and adoption phase right now, that last phase of the planning process. We provide the context, so what's the regional setting, where's the community located, what are some of the planning area constraints, be it the municipal boundary, but then also how far out you can be looking. Then we provide guidance later on for these planning areas, and really what some of the land use policies and the growth policies should be. We looked at the current zoning and the existing land use. We reviewed several past plans and studies, all of which that were relevant to the comprehensive plan. It's a pretty long list, there were even some studies here that we were made aware of, and we looked at in terms of what some of their guiding policies would be, how they're appropriate for the comprehensive plan update. And then the community outreach, again, we talked about the community outreach. Some of the key takeaways that we heard, and maybe that's something we can come back to, but just talking about like the aging infrastructure, a lot about the downtown, how we handle growth, both around the downtown, but also out a little bit further to the east. So a lot of different things were coming up throughout the process, and it was really our charge to get that folded into the plan's recommendations, making sure that you're achieving what we're hearing from the public. Establishing the vision, the goals, and the objectives, so this is a little bit different than the 2005 plan, which had a series of goals. This plan provides nine goals, and then under those goals, there are objectives. And all of that is tied back to this kind of grand vision of what you're trying to accomplish, and then it's followed up, you know, beyond this chapter by, you know, how did that happen in land use, where does that occur in parks and open space, how do community facilities play a role? So these nine goals are ultimately fed into or tied back to those chapters. And I won't go through all the goals, but it just gives you an idea, it's laid out. This is the vision statement, you know, each paragraph, it's very, it is supposed to be, and it is intentionally high level, you know, it's aspirational, and then these goals are helping you try to achieve that. The land use and development chapter, really the meat of the comprehensive plan when it comes to addressing how future growth, you know, how future redevelopment or development should occur, where that's appropriate, what's the appropriate scale. So in this section, we, or in this chapter, we identify the land use plan, so this is the generalized future land use plan, such a large area, you don't want to get it to the level of like this prescriptive, very detailed, this is what this parcel must be moving forward. A lot of that is what's really a part of a comprehensive plan, needs to be general, and then it's your zoning that will follow up and really help you implement what you're trying to see in terms of use, bulk and scale, those types of things. So here, we're talking about what uses are appropriate in each one of these land use areas. We identified some key considerations, so we talk about infrastructure, we talk about annexation, what are some of the appropriate strategies for annexing in the future, why are you annexing, what should be happening, what types of uses make the most sense, or are the right types of uses? And then that kind of gets folded into this strategic growth plan, strategic growth plan, which is similar to the 2005 plan in terms of having a strategic growth plan, but this is a little bit different in its interpretation, you know, what these areas are, so we talk about priority areas, one being that target investment or reinvestment, priority area two being infill, priority area three, the strategic periphery growth, but these aren't necessarily one, two, three, in terms of where you must be focusing, that these are priorities, and you need to be thinking about each one of these differently. So you look at the land use plan, and you see the colors seem similar, but in terms of the approach and how growth's going to occur there, it is different, so this strategy is supposed to set aside what that looks like, and better explain how that would happen over time. Just to provide a little bit more detail, we go beyond than just the land use plan that's generalized, and gives a really specific picture, a snapshot of, you know, what housing and residential areas will look like in the future, so you get a framework for that, and generalized descriptions of each one of those. We talk about, so there's three framework plans. There's the housing and residential area framework, there is the commercial areas framework, and then there's the industrial areas framework. So this just takes that general plan and gives a little bit more detail specifically for these types of areas, so residential, commercial, and industrial. One of the key, I would say, one of the key components of this section that was feedback that received from the city, feedback from the steering committee, feedback from staff, was this incorporation of an economic development policy. So working with staff, we were able to develop quite a bit of this economic development policy, really building off of what would typically be in an implementation chapter, but bringing this into the land use and development chapter, and really bolstering it, beefing it up. So that addresses things like workforce development, I don't wanna say everything, but workforce development, talent attraction, entrepreneurs, what those resources might look like, how those are gonna get you further down the line, and really starting to see some of these areas redeveloped or invested in, in a way that you haven't in the past. This comprehensive plan takes a strong look at transportation, so working with H.R. Green, we developed a transportation plan, so that's addressing the roadway network, talking about what some of the future roadway needs are, looking at roadway improvements, so breaking down all the potential improvements that are out there. Some of these are already on the city's task list, some of these might be a little bit more long-range, but being able to see it all visualized in one graphic and seeing how they would tie together is helpful. We talk about active transportation, so things like sidewalks, rails to trails, just general trails, where those are identified, where there might be some priority areas for sidewalk improvements or installations, and again, just trying to bring that into the focus of the transportation chapter. We talk about public transit, what's available, you know, where some of the key routes are, and then just sort of at a higher level, the railroad ownership and the impacts that that can have on some of the development that, you know, we'd like to see in the future, but understanding some of the constraints that that comes with. Chapter five, parks, open space, and the environment. The main look here was, we did a park supply evaluation, that was something that, working with city staff, we were able to do that analysis, do an inventory of all the existing parks, get a better understanding of what the current capacity is, and then identifying future, well, identifying the parks and the open space throughout the community, so it's pretty, it is a pretty chaotic map, but it gives you a sense of what's available, where these are located, and really what the types or the mix of open spaces are here in Sioux City. We identified trails, so that's both trails and bike routes, and then we talk about some of the environmental constraints, the environmental features throughout the community, so wetlands, the floodways, flood zones, flood hazards, parks, open space. Community facilities and infrastructure. I would say the two main things here that we identified are where all the community facilities and all the different types are, and we break them out, but we also tie that back to your capital improvement program, so what those projects might look like. Again, this isn't like an exhaustive list of all things that you'll ever have to do, but when you're looking at it from a comprehensive plan level, it's good to be tying these into some of the things that we already know the city's looking at, and maybe what some of the longer-term goals might be. So that was pulled into this chapter. Then the last section, well, second to last section, is the subarea plan, so something a little unique to this comprehensive plan versus the O5 was looking at some areas in more detail. There were three areas that we looked at, the Gordon Drive area, midtown, and then the Business Highway 20. Just for the sake of kind of walking through this, each subarea was looking at what the existing conditions are, what the existing uses are, providing an urban design framework, so, you know, where should streets, gates occur, what are some of the priority connections for pedestrians, what are some of the priority connections for cyclists, and then are there gateways, different features like that? So just in general, aesthetically and functionality-wise, how are people moving through these spaces? We identify a land use framework, so this gets a little bit more detail than the land use programs, the generalized land use plan, inside these subareas, and then identify what, you know, along the pier to commercial area, what's an appropriate mix of use? We even provide then, above and beyond that, like what's the right scale, how should these buildings be oriented, where should parking be located, how is landscaping, so these are very detailed studies. And then after that, once we sort of had all those policies set aside and identified, we created a series of visualizations. Some of these have like six or seven or eight graphics, just showing if these were to redevelop. It's not to say that all these buildings could be red, but you get an idea that these are the areas if they were to redevelop, buildings should be scaled up like this, it should be these types of uses, this is how the functionality of parking lots should be, just to give a better sense of when someone does come to redevelop this, you want to make sure that they are adhering to these types of programs. Lets them be a little bit more creative inside of this box that you've established for what your expectations are. Then the last chapter is implementation. So within the implementation chapter, we talk about how to use this plan, that one can be very important about how staff intends on using this document moving forward. So working with staff, we've made that very clear, what their expectations are, you know, working with the community, making sure that all the things that people have been hearing or doing throughout this process is maintained. So we talk about the use of the plan, you know, maintaining those partnerships that have been developed during this plan, both before, during, and hopefully you see that continue on. We identify some potential funding sources that are out there for any one of these types of recommendations, and kind of put those into a box. And then we establish a implementation matrix, and what the implementation matrix does, this really does become a checklist, really for your group, for planning and zoning, for city staff, just to see where you're successful in actually implementing the comprehensive plan. So we've taken recommendations that are in all the previous chapters, and sort of flipped that language, and it's very much more of an action-oriented type of deliverable, so, you know, are you doing this within, and they're broken up by chapter, are you doing this as we talked about in land use and development, or, you know, what was talked about in the residential areas framework? So each chapter here, it's referenceable, so if you want to go back, you'd be able to see it, but it identifies what the action is, what the key actions are, and then what the anticipated timeline is. The timeline is varied, if it's short-term, mid, or long-term. And with that, so that's kind of a brief overview, or about as brief as I could be, of the comprehensive plan, and then certainly any questions that you have, that's why I'm here tonight.
I have a couple for you, and thanks for the presentation. The goals that are nine, I don't remember what we had in the 2005 comprehensive plan for goals, but isn't part of the significance of the comprehensive plan, it ties into the funding and grants that you can apply for at the federal level, maybe even at the state level, where your comprehensive plan comes into play? So do the goals, outlining those nine goals with all the objectives underneath, will that have a better result, do you think, with the funding applications, or no effect, or what's your take on that?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I'm gonna look back to Jeff, but I mean, my first response would be, in many instances, the state statute outlines what you specifically need to provide. So you have the land use plan, you need to establish a vision and goals, and it really is a terminology thing. I mean, the way the O5 plan identifies its goals, I would say that those are objectives or strategies. So you have the core values, then you have visions for each one of these core values, and then below that are the goals. So our structure, it's a little more typical, I would say what we propose is you have the vision statement, then you identify your, really your core, your goals, and then from those goals, you can drive out, okay, so these are the six to 10 objectives under those, and then the idea is, those objectives get fully realized or fully discussed as recommendations inside of each chapter. So it should give you a more linear approach as you go out and you're seeking funding, it's much more clear what the overall vision is, it's not broken out into multiple sections or multiple visions. That does make that a little bit easier, just to just generally understand what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay, and two more questions. Could you go back to pages 42, 43, on the industrial area framework? And this is just more of a what your take was on it, or what your impression was on the industrial area framework. You see the downtown area?
I do.
What do you think of that? Just when you look at the map, just having a heavy, well, not heavy, I would say, a just an industrial area in the downtown.
Just having a downtown, yeah.
Near the downtown area, what?
I mean, it does have a visual impact, right? I mean, as you're coming along the highway, I'm assuming that's what you might be referring to. I would say there are communities that we work in where they would strive or push to inside the comprehensive plan, try to say that over time, that industrial area should go away. I know as we went through this process, that really wasn't something, you know, maybe we did hear that a few times, but we heard just as many times, that's not realistic, or that's not really the direction we want this to go, or we have so much other opportunities in other areas in the downtown. You know, if long-term, I mean, beyond even the scope of this plan, that's something that's realistic, I think that'll be because so much has already happened in some of these other subareas that we identified in the downtown. So it's not to say that that's not a future reality, I just don't believe that it's a reality within the scope of this comprehensive plan, the timeframe for this plan.[1743.53] reality within the scope of this comprehensive plan, the timeframe for this plan. But again, if enough is happening in the downtown, in some of these periphery areas, that becomes more realistic in the future.
Yeah, it's a difficult, it's really kind of difficult, because a lot of the successes of Sioux City depended on that industrial
Absolutely.
...development, and we relied on it heavily, so it's very difficult to do a balancing of that. But I just wanted to see what your impression was.
And it's a strong tax base. I mean, that's the other challenge, is you're not, sometimes you're offsetting it by something that might not be generating those kinds of dollars, or, you know, are there, and I think we tried to talk about that, are there things that you can do as you're entering into the downtown, or into the southern area of the downtown, that might offset that visual? But the reality is, it's a raised road, you see quite a bit of it, but I think there's ways to embrace it, so I know we talk about that a little bit, but also recognizing that that becomes like a long-term vision. I think that's something you might want to pick off in the next plan.
Sure, thanks for that. And then just lastly, the matrix, the implementation matrix, I thought was very good, because I think we need to keep that, the council needs to keep that in front of us, and use that as a checklist, so that the comprehensive plan does not get put on the shelf and not used. And maybe we had the ma, Jeff, maybe we had the matrix in the past, I just don't remember it being that concise and that detailed, and I like that.
Good, no, I appreciate it. That, I always say, that's probably my favorite eight pages of a document, because it is, this is a very long comprehensive plan, and it needs to be, and I know we really, we're striving for brevity, which is hard to say when you're looking at a hundred and seventy-five-page plan, but the idea is that you have that implementation matrix to help you when you're moving forward, making decisions, those should be easy check-offs, or some of them are going to be more challenging, but they should be on your radar, and that's a brief kind of checklist or hit list of what needs to be done.
Well, thank you. That's all I have for you.
Thanks. Other comments?
Yeah, the only thing that I would say is, I would thank you on your work for this for sure, and Jeff as well, and all of city staff that's been a part of it, I really appreciate. And being a part of the process, I've been on the steering committee, and so I've got to be a part of a lot of those conversations, and I think they're really beneficial exercises to have, to kind of see what the vision for not only people that sit behind this desk, but also the public, and what they would like to see, and what their priorities should be. The only thing that I would caution, and I would hope, and I guess I'm looking more towards Jeff and maybe your company, you know what I mean, to help us, do is, when we look at specifically Ann Westra and the team, and trying to put things out, whether it's on LinkedIn, social media avenues, other things like that, we really need something digestible. You need to have conversation topics, and like, this is what this is, because I think to the mayor's point, the reason, well, in his previous point, not tonight, but his previous points, had been that some of these plans just sit on shelves, right, and not enough people do that. I think it's because you have a hundred and seventy-five pages of documentation. So then, it's like, well, how do you stay on top of that, or keep that front of mind, when you just set nine goal, you know what I mean, whether it's, because a top-ten list is not insurmountable, you know what I mean, it's not like that's a crazy number, but I tell you what, in today's day and age, you get like three shots, like what are your top three, what are you going to do, what is this going to happen, it's all headline, people don't read articles, you know what I mean, so what is the headline going to be here? And I think that we, as a city, need to continue to think about that and address that, and say, okay, well, we did this exercise, this is all the research and all the time that you and your team put into this, but I think we need to have a serious conversation, as far as what do we boil that down, what does that look like, and how do we, how do we sell that to the community?
Yeah, no, I certainly agree, and like I said, it's extremely difficult to address all the things that you need to address in a comprehensive plan, and keep it very brief. And I would say, the response to what you're seeking is, I would say that is the implementation matrix, and I know even that looks long, but those are really broken out by departments, right? I mean, there's certain departments that are going to be focused on what should be done with the parks and open space, there's certain departments that are going to be looking at transportation, those do become more digestible. I think you start getting into a list of, it is twenty or twenty-five, and I know that's long, but even within those, we identify the key actions, and there's seven. These are the seven key actions in transportation, that if you do this, it's going to be either catalytic for other improvements to occur, or these might be the biggest lifts, so they should be something that you're focused on sooner rather than later. So we do try to get to that, and I fully recognize that it's a long document, so we try to do our best to, I think, break it down. If you were to read the vision goals and objectives, and then you read the implementation matrix, and you're in a very good understanding of what happened in the middle, this is what we want to do, this is what we have to do tomorrow to get to that, and that's really, that's that section. So I think you could run, and I've seen communities take the implementation matrix and break it down, and that be on like a public website, or a forum, or it's just something they discuss at each one of their meetings.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is I get what you're saying, I'm saying, when we're advertising this, when we're marketing this, when we're talking about, you know, we need to look at what that looks like.
Absolutely.
To be able to say, because to your point, I think that then goes to the city manager and says, well, when you're working with these departments, these are those goals, this is what the comprehensive plan is, what are you doing to meet those objectives? I mean, we'll have to look to his continuity more than just an elected body.
Sure, as part of this process, we've continued to work with Ann Westra on the marketing of this, and the PR piece. As part of that, that's come out of those discussions recently, is the opportunity to have a one-page handout. And so when we're asked, or when we have either residential or commercial industrial developer in town, working with either myself, or Marty, or the team, and they say, well, where's your comprehensive plan? We have a one-page handout, it would direct them to the entire plan, a hundred and seventy-some pages on the website, but we could at least have a very condensed executive summary with some graphics, some of those key goals, that here's our plan, be very similar to what we've done with the city strategic plan, where we've condensed it down to one or two pages tops. We'd want to have the same framework for this comp plan.
Even if it was a brochure, at least then you have both pages, or both sides, you know what I mean, depending on how you fold it, and stuff like that, but I agree, I'm glad that's a goal, because I think that's something that the public is going to want, and if we want to really talk about that and be able to at home, I think that would be important.
I agree.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Again, everyone. I think the public does not engage enough with thinking about it.
I'll take all that action you want. Anyone in the audience want to be heard? Seeing young, we'll go to council concerns, Mr. Gretkin.
For council's information, and maybe you know this already, but Mark Munson recently retired from MURD, and getting ready for a knee surgery, they found additional issues, and he had four bypass surgery a week ago today.
Oh, wow.
He seems to be doing really well. I don't think he minds us sharing, MURD sent out a little email, and so I thought I'd share it with council, let you know Mark's doing well, and in the blockages, they described it ninety-nine point nine percent blocked, so he's really fortunate, but he's on the road to recovery.
Good.
And he's a good guy, and he's, as you know, been on the, I don't know how long he was on the Board of Supervisors, but I think as the executive director of MURD, maybe twenty-five years, or was he the only one they had? Do you know?
He was a board member for most of the time, yeah.
Yeah, but he's done a great job, recently retired from that, and I just thought I'd share that. And then, Alex, I've been wondering about CVB lately, any quick update?
Yeah, so I would, I would just say that things are progressing, there was a little bit of a hiccup and some turnover over in South Sioux with their tourism office, and so they are looking at those different channels as far as funding, because they have some of the funding in their tourism entity, and so we're working with them and the city of South Sioux City, to kind of see how we're going to be able to address that, so those funds can be utilized. But it's going well, we're actually planning, we had planned the pitch to the different hotels and hoteliers, but then the transition with the Hard Rock kind of delayed that just a little bit, because we'll be utilizing that space, and Mike Adams is the chair of our board, so we wanted him to be present for that. So our next meeting is next week, and we'll be setting that date. We've continued to talk to everyone, everyone's on board, yeah. So then we just need to get those, then we need to get those papers signed, and then to us, but yeah, otherwise things are moving forward.
Thank you.
Correct, we did just brief a little bit of money as far as traveling, we've made sure that we had a presence represented at each of the Iowa Tourism meetings, and so we've had staff, or like Mike Adams went to the last one, to be able to make sure that they know what our vision is, and what the future is going to look like, and so I think some of that money has been used for that. But yeah, you're right, not to that extent, and we finalized the executive direction, or executive director job description, we're ready to go with that, as soon as those other things are done, we're implementing everything, so.
Thank you. That's all.
It's been a process, Pete, but I see the finish line.
I gave it to you, because you said, I'm going to get this done, and a year later, we're so waiting for you to get it done, young man.
I was, Mayor.
You that's been shaken now.
I tell you what, I'm on it, I mean, you've been up here since I was born, and it hasn't been done, so.
The old guys are dragging their feet.
Give me one session, give me one, one term, or what, Mayor, come on, yeah.
Julie, do you have anything for the good of the organization?
I'd like to say I'm nearing completion of visiting every city department. Everyone's been very welcoming and very informative. I believe I have eight departments to finish out of twenty-three, so I'm just about finished, and I thank everyone for that.
Alex?
I tell you what, we have a heck of a week here in City Hall. We got our downtown partners joint meeting tomorrow at noon, as well as the, as Jeff was saying. So that's going to be at the Hard Rock in the, like, sports betting area, and so if you park in that new ramp, and then just take the elevator right down, it kicks you out right there.
How much does that ramp cost?
I actually believe it's free.
Kind of like our recycling bin.
Kind of like our, Dan, that's a brilliant point, my friend, exactly right. Then on Wednesday, we have the sister city signing, and so we'll be here for that, and then, yep, exactly, for Jillian Kosovo. And then, one other plug I wanted to put out there, I know that the women probably have their meeting as well, but coming up on Thursday at 5:30 PM, it's going to be in the concourse of the Tyson Event Center, is the 100-plus Men Who Care. I know I brought that up in previous meetings, and some of you have actually been able to make it as well, so I just wanted to throw that out there, if you don't receive the emails yet, that is on Thursday at 5:30 PM. Again, a chance to really get behind and support in a big way some of the nonprofits in our community, I believe, I forget, what is it, since the last fall or something, we've, or is it over the course of last year, we donated over a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to various nonprofits. So that's Thursday, 5:30 Tyson Concourse. On Friday, we're going to have an industrial roundtable with Debbie Durham, and talk about all the money that we're going to be able to get here for Sioux City, and then on Saturday, we have the operating budget, so.
Good thing I enjoy working with all of you, because we're going to see each other a lot.
I have nothing further, Mayor.
Move, we adjourn, I got to go to work.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Yeah, actually, it's fun, I replied.